Are you there, Kim?
Hi, everyone. Yep, I'm here. Thank you.
For me, Isaac. I'd like to call to order the work session to hear about the tree canopy assessment to order at 6:00 PM. Tonight, we have Jack Heffernan from MPP Candidate 2023 from PSU here to give a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. My name, as the mayor mentioned, is Jack Heffernan. I am a master in public policy candidate with Portland State University. Tonight, I am presenting the findings of the tree canopy assessment. I was last before you on March 6th to present the projects, kind of at the start of the project. And here we are three months later with the findings. And so to go into some background about the project, as you know, the city is developing a 50-year plan. The plan will include recommended alterations to the city development code. The request for proposals to develop the plan asks for an urban tree canopy study. And the study was included in the 50-year plan's scope of work at the request of a former counselor who wanted to understand the percentage of tree canopy coverage, as well as the benefits of increased canopy coverage, what that would might bring. The Scappus Bay watershed council at its June 2022 meeting discussed the benefits of robust tree canopy coverage. Those include biodiversity, managing stormwater, street cooling, particle filtering, stress reduction, and increased neighborhood property values. And at that same meeting, a local certified arborist was conducted tree assessments in cities throughout the Northwest, outlined three steps when conducting such assessments and urban forestry planning. That started with the first step of taking stock of existing conditions. And that can be accomplished through efforts like a tree canopy survey. And he then recommended developing goals and desired changes such as development code alterations. And finally, the third step would be achieving those goals through tools such as regulatory requirements and grants. So this assessment responds to that first step of just taking stock of what you already have. And the assessment features iTree technology, which is recommended by the arborist. This application is offered by the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service. It allows users to define reference areas or use preset boundaries before defining various coverage types. And after classifying a coverage type, the user adds another location. How it works is basically you hit a plus sign and then the app takes you to randomize location on the map of the city. You then look at the specific point and then classify that as a tree, as water, sidewalk, et cetera. And then it works similarly to opinion polls in that it collects an overall sample to provide coverage estimates. The app recommends between 500 and 1,000 points per project. For a 500-point project, the expected error rate is 2.2%. For 1,000 points, the expected error rate is 1.5%. And for sake of caution, this assessment consisted of 1,289 points. The application can provide data points about the economic benefits of types of carbon sequestration, such as air pollution benefits and hydrological benefits to the city's natural environment. And so moving on to the results of the assessments, the magic number here would be 17.05% canopy coverage within the 3.42 square miles that encompass Scappus City limits. That would project identified 220 of the 1,289 points as trees. You'll see in Exhibit A that it lists coverage percentages and the total numbers of points for each coverage class, including trees. And overall, in terms of dollar signs, the trees in Scappus are estimated to provide $2,449,790 in overall savings. This includes $69,449 in carbon sequestered annually, as well as 2.202,25367 stored in trees overall, so not annually. And just for your understanding, in the context of carbon sequestration refers to the process of removing carbon from the air and storing it, whereas storage is just the quantity of carbon stored at any given time. And between sequestration and storage, trees in Scappus sequester 391.62 tons of carbon each year, and they store 12,435.89 tons. To put that in context, considering that there are 2,889 households in the city and using research at the University of Michigan, those households are estimated to emit roughly 140,000 tons of carbon dioxide each year. So just putting those figures into context. You'll see in Exhibit D that there is a short list of comparables. Not every city in Oregon and Washington has conducted a tree canopy assessment, but we found cities that have conducted these assessments. And on the high side, in terms of tree canopy coverage, is Lake Oswego, a 10.78 square mile city with 47.1% tree canopy coverage. And the city with the most similar coverage to Scappus would be Tacoma. It has 49.71 square miles and 19% coverage. Milwaukee is the most similar in size with 4.98 square miles and is covered by 26% of tree canopy. This assessment also includes a change over time analysis. This analysis uses Google Earth to compare past satellite images with the classification in iTree. This assessment compared the city's coverage with the year 2013. So that allowed us to look at satellite images of the year 2013, go through each point that was classified in iTree. And then if there was a change that was needed to that classification, make that change in iTree canopy. And the difference, as you can see, in 2013, the tree canopy coverage was 17.71%, which was slightly higher than the current canopy coverage. So just putting these numbers into a larger context, the city's tree canopy coverage is well below the typically recommended coverage for a city. American Forest is a national nonprofit conservation organization. And in 1997, it set a general recommendation of 40% tree canopy coverage for a city. Since then, it has offered a more nuanced recommendation, advising that cities optimize coverage by weighing desired benefits against associated costs based on the priorities and specifics of a given city. These community-specific goals depend on several circumstances. Those can include climate, geography, specific environmental concerns, local preferences, desired ecosystem services, land cover and land use patterns, resources, among other factors. The American Forest has listed numerous cities nationally along with their current coverages and coverage goals. On the low end of that spectrum would be San Francisco and Las Vegas. Each of those cities have tree canopy coverages under 15% at the time of assessments, and they had goals of 20%. And on the high end would be Fort Bragg, North Carolina, with 67.1% coverage and a goal of 70%. So by way of a recommendation at this point, prior to developing goals and desired changes as far as tree canopy coverage, the city may wish to conduct a tree inventory analysis. This would identify the quantity of each type, specific type of tree located within city limits in order to optimize the benefits of tree canopy coverage as recommended by American Forests. And then after developing those goals, the city may identify changes such as development code alterations. And finally, with that in hand, the city could plan specific steps such as regulatory requirements and grants. And with that, that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one quick one. Just from my understanding, when we look at it, Scappus sequesters almost 400 tons of carbon. That looks like that's equivalent to 1,500 CO2 equivalent. But the city, we emit roughly 140,000 tons. So I mean, we're not even
From just residential homes, there's also like vehicle emissions, agriculture, and other factors like that.
Yeah, there are other factors include like air flight, agriculture, and so it's not all encompassing.
Not even, it's like 1%. I mean, what the trees are helping is 1% of just households, if I'm reading correctly. Thank you. Yes.
Lori, what does it look like now if there's a developer coming in, let's say, you know, Dutch Canyon Estates or something like that? The requirement on how many trees need to be on a lot, what is our current kind of minimum or standard?
Currently, if a new subdivision goes in, we don't have requirements per se that they're, you know, protecting or maintaining trees on site. They are allowed to clear for the development. They are required to then replant street trees in the planter strip behind the sidewalks.
So what would change if we did all this study and conducted a tree inventory? You know, it's talking about potential code alterations. What really would we be doing more of than we're not doing now if we did have that study?
And that's why I would want the professionals to help us with that. I do have as part of the 50-year plan, I have the consultants looking into the street tree code chapter of the development code to make recommendations as well as one thing I've been interested in, and Chris as well, is our code doesn't have very well, really don't have hardly any standards for requirement of shade trees and parking lots. That's something I'm asking them to look into as well. I would like some good standards on that that we could incorporate. Chris, do you have any other ideas?
Just to echo what Lori said, I was kind of shocked when I started here that the city doesn't have any site development requirements for trees. So essentially, you could have an entire parking lot like Fred Meyer's with no trees in it, just empty islands, and actually not, they're not even required to have landscape islands. So the whole thing could just be a sea of asphalt. And why primarily cities adopt this is to provide coverage to cool stormwater runoff that goes into streams. And some of our parking lots, most of them don't directly convey to a stream, but if they did, it wouldn't be good. So that's a really strong argument to have shade tree coverage. And you'll notice, the other benefit too, is that particularly in parking lots in the summer, people want to park there because of bright shade. So it's those owners, they realize that there's an aesthetic value and a practical value to having them. So they'll do it voluntarily, but it's not something we require, which I think we should. With regard to street trees, they also do the same thing with stormwater runoff. There, those impacts with temperature are more immediate because a lot of those, a lot of our roadways convey directly into a ditch which goes into the particularly on the west side of town. And so it's really, it's really good to have that. They also provide traffic calming, which a lot of people don't realize that that's that's a byproduct of having trees in the right of way.
Kim?
Yeah, thank you. Well, this is exciting. I'm glad for getting this research done. Quick question for the researcher. So we are inevitably going to have some growth, and so our impervious surfaces are going to continue to grow like we saw. It's greater than what we saw in 2013. Do we need to be planning for kind of like a one-to-one ratio of like trees, grass, shrubs, and all that for each, like, say acre of impervious surface growth, or two-to-one, or what's kind of best practices when you're planning for growth?
Well, I would say that would be a little bit outside of the scope of the research that I conducted. This was mostly just taking stock of the tree canopy coverage currently and looking back at 2013, you were correct in assessing that there was, there is more impervious surface now. There is less tree canopy coverage, less shrub, herbaceous type of coverage. But as far as the ratio, the desired ratio, that would be a better question for maybe the code consultants that Lori mentioned, and also just depends on the city's priorities.
Yep. So I guess Lori and team, that would be a good one to look at, kind of what's the ratio of, I guess, balancing all that out, right, with the canopy cover versus the impervious surface growth? And then just one more question, in the communities that you cited that had the higher average of canopy tree cover, do you know, do they have like established relationships with like organizations like Friends of Trees? Or like, is there some sort of like nonprofit partnership that's been formed that really helps them excel in that area, or?
I'm not sure about that specifically. I didn't get into the kind of the how of how they develop their tree canopy goals. This is more just a, just kind of a look at the numbers with each city. But this assessment did not get into the kind of the policy specifics of those cities.
Yeah, I guess that might just be one other thing we want to look into is how those communities achieve those goals. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work.
So several of these cities, I know Lake Oswego for a very long time, have partnered with an organization called Tree City USA. And I believe Milwaukee has as well. Tiger did their urban forestry. Prager, who's the consultant that was mentioned, was a member of the Tiger staff, and he probably did their urban forestry. It's got to be a decade ago or plus. It might be like 13 years. They also have, I think they all have tree ordinances. And it deals with existing trees, though we can't prevent trees from being cut down for development if that's to occur. But I mean, I've worked with several of these jurisdictions, and they do spec that there's a certain amount of lot coverage for residential lots that's treed. So what we do is we would say, street trees, what they might do is say like the max lot coverage for a house would be whatever percent. Maybe it's 40%, and then they would spec that there is a certain amount of trees for the lot coverage. So they're more prescriptive as far as grass, tree, house goes. And what that ensures is that as those trees grow, then you have more coverage. But in, and I worked a little bit with Tiger when they were doing their stuff, the staff that stood out for me was the amount of bare ground, which, I mean, I, nothing else was really surprising, but the fact that it seems like there's just like dirt versus grass or shrubs was surprising, and it seems like there might be an opportunity there. Through, there are organizations that will gift, will go door-to-door and they'll give trees, and also participate in the planting of those trees. And they're not very expensive to bring into a community. And the communities where I've seen it happen, Oregon City comes to mind just because they had such a successful, it was really a rally around the flag issue for people in the community, particularly children, that feel like they were planting these trees. And so I've seen all of those programs work. Like anything else, there are benefits and burdens to any individual program, but I think one can certainly craft it to help address this issue.
That was one thing I was going to ask about, some of these developments that don't have any trees, they're older developments. Are we able to go in and entice and work with them and develop a plan and give them a tree, you know, give them trees to plant? Are there programs that we can look into doing that? And then also look at the zoning on the new housing developments that go in to require, like in my housing development, it is Dutch Canyon. Like, we have six or seven trees. A lot of people around me don't have any. I mean, so there's no zoning other than street trees of what each individual lot has, is my understanding. And then so if I want, if you do go in and say you need to be able to have so many trees, I can go in and cut my own trees down, correct? I mean, my son has had to cut a few and the wind has blown a few down. But is there, and then also like you're saying, cut down trees? Can you require, if you cut down 1% or 10 trees, that you are required to replace it with other trees somewhere else, to replace trees that you have cut down?
So in Lake Oswego, if you need to cut down one tree for development, then you have to replace it with three trees.
Yeah, so those are policy decisions that the council could consider in the future. Again, we don't have, we haven't gotten into kind of that realm of looking at this yet, but that would be sort of a follow-up discussion.
The, like, these all have a goal. We don't have a goal. So is that, that's not something our 50-year plan would be looking at at this time to say?
No, that's not, it's not in the current scope. So if that was something you wanted to follow up on, so Jack's recommendation was conducting a tree inventory analysis and then taking that information along with this and looking at some other good examples to develop a goal and to put policy that would kind of in place that would get us there. That would be something that's not currently in the scope of the 50-year, be something we could look at doing, or it could be something that we roll into once the 50-year plan is more or less wrapped up, just because this is our focus right now, and we do have a lot of staff time devoted to it. So to take on a new project midstream might be challenging. But we're certainly interested in, I have some notes already, but interested in hearing what the council would be interested in.
Just follow up. I agree with Peter. I was surprised by that 18% soil bare ground. Do we have a sense of where those areas are? I mean, I'm just, most residential properties have a lawn, so it'd be thrown into the grass area, right? Veterans, but these parks have grass, so I'm just, I'm just wrapping my head around where are these areas?
Thinking back to the assessments, and notice those areas typically kind of around neighborhoods, like in areas that have been developed and near areas that are like possibly develop. I don't want to speak out there, but like they're close to other housing that appear to be new housing. So it's, yeah, and this could also, like soil, that could also include like a track, high school track, something like that.
I would feel freshly plowed field.
Yeah.
When was this taken? Like, it wasn't in the fall when everything was dead and you, just recently?
This was some, well, the current assessment was using this year and the map was, I believe, 2021 in July, June or July. And the 2013 assessment was in July of 2013.
I mean, is there any chance that they saw a dead field and counted it as soil bare ground versus?
So, so it's not the app, so it's actually my, I actually classify it myself. The app takes me to a point and then I classify it based on what I see. And I, how I judged it was if it was either kind of a darker or browner surface, I classified that as soil or bare ground. If it was mostly a green surface, I would classify it as shrub, basius, that classification. So, you know, it was a little, it's not totally black or white, but that was how I really judge it.
Like all the Scappus sand and gravel property, all that is pretty big area, and that would have been bare ground.
That was, I would have, yeah.
Yes, Kim?
Yeah, so just to Lori's points, I guess to the extent possible that we can go ahead and integrate this into the 50-year plan would be good because Lori, you made a good point that, you know, we kind of want to do any necessary code changes all at once and not piecemeal them. That maybe even takes more staff time and you get less effective results, right? We want to look at the big picture of change. So particularly if we're considering smaller lot sizes because trees need space. And so if we're kind of factoring all that in, I think doing the canopy goals and coverage would be good to include in that if possible.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Kim. We will look into that to see what we can do. As I had mentioned, we certainly are going to be looking at the landscaping code already, as well as the street tree code. But I'll talk to our consultants about what they recommend as far as next steps so that they have the information they would need to make good recommendations to us.
Thank you.
And then I'd like to look at, yeah, what do we need to do to be able to come up with a goal? Because I think any development is going to take, every development right now that's out there is grass or trees now. They're going to take that down and put up concrete and houses. So we're going to lose numbers unless we plant somewhere else, existing houses that don't have them. You know, can we develop a program where we want to take this on and go it around to the citizens and have everyone plant trees? Because that's where we're going to get an increase, a net increase. So I would like to know how we do that. Is that something you, we task staff as saying this is something we want to do? We all have a straw poll and say, yeah, let's work towards that. Yes, Jeanette?
How would this affect the timeline if we do incorporate it into the 50-year plan? As far as would this extend that, and then obviously there's a cost.
Correct. There would be a cost. That's an unknown right now. And then I guess it would depend on how far we took it as far as, you know, what would the process look like for setting these goals? Would we do open houses with the community, kind of what that entire thing looks like? And until that was sort of nailed down, I'm not sure how much it might extend the process, but that's a good question. There are certainly organizations like Tree City USA, which Peter had mentioned. I believe that this city actually used to participate in that program years past. We did have an urban forestry advisory board at one time in the mid-'90s. The work that they did actually established our street tree chapter. So there have in the past been work focused on this. And so I guess moving forward, once we do reach a goal, we definitely, we would have to look at the funding of that, what that looks like for city staff and you know, probably public works and the Parks Department and everyone's availability to implement a new program. So those would all be considerations that I know that staff would have. But I would need to come back with more information once I kind of wrap my brain around what that might look like to take this to the next step.
Question I have then is if 50-year plan comes out with their recommendations, how long from that period to when zone changes would be enacted or made?
Right. So let's just presume that this goes to planning commission and council next fall for adoption. That would be adoption of pretty much all the products together at this point. There is a possibility we might take portions of it if it makes sense for adoption before, say, the heavy lift of a UGB expansion, urban reserve establishment. But essentially, once you've adopted the changes, it takes 30 days for them to be in effect. An ordinance, it's a 30-day time period before those changes are in effect.
So from the time the 50-year plan makes a recommendation, we make those zoning changes at that point?
It's, it's, planning commission will hear all the applications first. They'll make a recommendation to city councils. City council will make a final decision. Hopefully, nothing gets appealed. And presuming nothing gets appealed, and the night that the ordinance is approved, 30 days after that, it would be in effect.
That all happens within a couple of months of time. It's not like there's a year that we then look at zoning changes and
No, we're looking to, it's all going to wrap together. Yeah. It's, all the pieces are pretty much interconnected.
If we wanted to lump in this tree canopy goals and zoning changes, we have to have everything done by that time if we want to put it on.
If it's going to go together, yeah. So that is, so that to Counselor Santiago's question is a very legitimate question because if this does push it out three months, everything else, you know, presumably could get pushed out as well. is very legitimate question because if this does push it out three months, everything else, you know, presumably could get pushed out as well. Not to say that we can't do it. It's just, uh, we need to gather some more information.
Did we put any money in the budget for any of this, uh, tree assessment, tree counting, any inventory?
This specifically, no. So we did obviously budget for the remainder of the 50 year project. But that's why we'd want to gather a little bit more information about, you know, budgets, schedules, things like that. You know, obviously, as with anything like this, rolling it all together would be great. However, you know, there's nothing to say we can't come back and do it later if that's what needs to happen also. We'll just have to see what they think. Um, sometimes rolling it all together makes it more efficient. Sometimes if they have a lot on their plate, it really doesn't. So it just, without more input, we're just speculating at this point, but we, we can gather that information and bring it back to you all for consideration.
Yes.
It's, it's critical that this tree inventory analysis does happen in order for all of these ideas that have gone around the room to go into action, or can we not implement some of these things that we're thinking without taking the time and money to do this inventory?
I, I, I would say that there's some think, simple things that you could do with our site development code that would just include tree canopy and landscape requirements for parking lots that we don't have right now at all. And so, and almost every agency has examples of, of that type of code. We, we could just implement some kind of average. And usually it's, to, to get to Kim's question earlier, usually it's, it's so much landscaping per parking stall. So many square feet. And then within that amount of square footage, you have to provide so many trees, so many trees per, per stall. And so that kind of gets at a typical parking arrangement. You might see it, say a Costco or a, or Fred Meyer somewhere else in the metro area. That's, that's how they arrive at those, those, that's why those islands are there. Essentially they're meeting those standards.
Regardless of the size of the building. I mean, that's taken into consideration based on parking.
All related to parking. And, and then it establishes those parking bays with islands that you turn around. All of that's prescribed in code everywhere else in the metro area except for here. It's pretty simple to do that. I mean, it's very, it's pretty uniform everywhere. Street trees are, are covered already under our code. When you place them at some interval based on the type of tree. With regard to lot coverage on residential, in the last three big subdivisions we've done, those lots had nothing, but they were just fields. So essentially as developed lots, there's many, many more trees than there were existing. You know, South Fork was just an empty grass field. Pioneer was just a field. Dutch Canyon was mostly a field except for some walnut trees that had been let, let go. So a lot of times when you develop residential, you're developing it and adding a lot of tree coverage that wasn't there existing. So sort of a net benefit. And, and you also, you're never going to see, you know, really raw dirt on somebody's property. Normally it's, it's landscaped in some fashion. So yours is getting sort of a carbon benefit residential anyway. It may not be a tree, but it's going to be something else. So I, I don't think you need to do a big extensive study to get at site development code, so, you know, in a minimal way. It's tough to start wiring trees on residential because some folks may want a swimming pool in their backyard and not want a big, you know, deciduous tree over it. So there's, there's some weird. You start to get into some challenges there.
Council Grayson?
So one path that we could be able to take is whether it's with the consultants to look over the code, pair it to some others, you know, Chris has made some real easy, you know, starting off points because everybody does it, but we don't, um, and add those in. And that could kind of be part of the plan in the fall, you know?
That's already planned for.
But then perhaps like a council goal going into the next year, come January, February, as we meet as a council and we come up with our goals, we could potentially, depending if we even needed it, put the tree inventory analysis on it as a council goal and then that next fiscal year we could budget for it. But that's not to say that some changes couldn't happen before then.
Correct. I think that's a great idea. Because as you know, the council goals are what direct funding towards a project as well as staff time. Um, and so I think that that's a really great way to approach it because then it would reserve time for us to work on that. Um, and provide a funding for us to do it correctly and to not rush it. And to make sure you're getting what you're looking for because I think that if what you're aiming for is to set a goal and for the city to really focus on that and work on it, you know, from here on out, uh, it is going to take staff time and focus to implement a new program like that. And I would want there to be some, you know, interaction with the community to get their, you know, sense of that. And that's going to take some open houses. That's going to take some outreach. And so we wouldn't want to necessarily rush this through. So I, I like your council goal approach. I think it's reasonable. And like I said, we, we definitely are going to be making changes to the code in relation to trees as part of the 50 year plan. It won't just, it's not going to be a standalone, super heavy tree focus. Establishing goals and things like that. It's going to be more site development review related.
Kim?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm supportive of doing, incorporating best practices, um, in the whatever, you know, next update of code that we'll be doing off the 50 year plan. And then better planning for a more thorough review. But Lori does, considering reduction of lot sizes at all, impede what we might do going forward, once we do a more thorough canopy recup, like canopy study and that.
I don't think so. I mean, if you think about some of the cities that have higher, you know, um, coverage amounts now, they allow higher density than we do by quite a bit. Um, and so I don't think it's going to preclude anything. We're not looking to reduce, uh, minimum lot sizes for single family residential. It's really going to pertain more to, uh, multi-family housing, some of the middle housing types, but I don't think it's going to preclude. I mean, that's a great thought, you know, to think ahead. But I wouldn't say we would have, you know, any conflicts there.
Okay, great.
And like with parks, then can we, do we have a plan in our parks to build, you know, plant more trees? When we have parks in Rec, make that as a recommendation on any of our new parks that we put in, can we look at, at this, at the time of, um, we decide what to do at those parks as well? My question was too, is, um, are trees that much better than shrub grass? At, you know, all the sequestering, all the, the benefits. I know the shade. But are the trees the way you really, most cities want to go versus grass and plants?
Yeah. So the, uh, the application didn't, um, measure the benefits of, of other classifications besides trees, but generally, yeah, trees are kind of the focus on, of, of these types of, um, these types of assessments.
So we're talking storm runoff or, you know, flooding, uh, shrubs and grass absorb as well as trees versus, you know, concrete. But, um, I just wanted to kind of get that distinction because, uh, we do have, you know, we could turn a lot of that, that soil bare ground into grasses and shrubs and, and trees as well. We can see where that is. Yes.
I, I agree with Counselor Grayson as far as the plan. Um, and that'll make, that alleviate stress from the staff and, and, uh, maybe we can plan it better and budget for it better for our next goal. So I agree.
Is, is there typically our town hall back to February? I mean, is that when it usually would be this year because of?
So in years past, we did have it in February. Um, we found was that there were several years where weather precluded us from having the meeting and it did seem like April's just been working better. So that was the plan moving forward was to hold it in April. Yes, not Easter weekend.
Any more questions?
I just have one more. I, I just have one more. I would ask the city manager to flag when we do get into goal setting that we maybe also look at building a relationship with the Scapus Bay Watershed Council or some other organization that could offer tree trees, kind of, uh, similar to Friends of Trees or the other organizations that have been mentioned.
So we actually do, um, have a really great relationship with the Scapus Bay Watershed Council currently. We have an agreement with them in place. They actually work with Public Works to help us put in plantings and various things. So, um, we could certainly reach out to them, but we definitely do have a relationship established with them already.
Yeah. And so to extend that to residential, because I know, like when I lived in Portland, Friends of Trees would come around and say, hey, we're going to do a tree planting. Would you like us to do a tree? So if there's a way to, you know, if we need to earmark some money to support our residential expansion for that relationship, something to consider for goal setting.
Yes, Peter?
And Friends of Trees will come to other, other cities. So if, I don't, and one of my thoughts and Jack, I don't know if you have any more capacity, um, on this project or, or whether you'd want. But if you downloaded the data that you've gathered to Friends of Trees, I could very easily see them coming out. Cause that's the organization that did Oregon Cities. And just as a, is a non-legal observation, if you start with something that's really positive in nature, like giving away trees and, and kids planting trees, that sometimes makes the regulatory thing, like go much more smoothly than if you start with like a tree ordinance that would restrict people from cutting down a tree. So, um, I've just, one of the primary benefits in addition to trees that I've observed is that it creates kind of this positive culture and education around trees.
So I do, I agree. I'd like Council President Grayson's recommendation on goals and then we can develop a plan around it at that time. Make it a community effort. Okay. Anything else? We good on direction? Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you, Jack, very much. Nothing else for work session? Session is adjourned.